You're in charge. High five.
I'm pretty proud of you.
You do it.
I'm pretty proud of you, so.
I got this.
I may not be able to make this up.
I don't know, so if we're gonna work backwards, you want me to do all of it?
All right, good morning, everyone, and welcome to our weekly board session. It's Wednesday, February 22nd. It is nine o'clock, it's Ash Wednesday, and we are here, as I said, for our board session. As always, we join, we start with the Pledge of Allegiance, so if you would please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we do have someone signed up for public comment. David Beam is here, so if you want to, please come right up, David.
My name's David Beam, I'm spokesman for disabilities in Marion County. I was wondering, does county commissioners need to look at this policy on the rent for disability people in foster homes? Because the rent's too high right now in Marion County. A lot of them are gonna lose their housing and they're gonna be out on the street. So I was thinking if we can look at that lowering that rent for all the disability people and the women who live in the foster homes. I'd like to see that looked at.
Thank you, David.
The mental health.
Appreciate that. We have a lot of projects we do with housing, and we'll put this into the pot. And I want you to stay there, because this is actually very appropriate that you're advocating for folks with disabilities, because our next thing to do is to present a letter to you, to have a presentation, so sit tight.
Morning, Commissioners. Ryan Matthews, the Administrator with the Health and Human Services Department, and I am here to, I guess, recommend David Beam as an honorary member of our Mental Health Advisory Committee.
Set on.
Just tap it, see if it's...
Maybe just...
Can you hear me okay? Sorry.
I can't hardly hear you.
Hello?
Okay, there you go, perfect.
Okay, we'll try this. Sorry about that. Once again, for the record, my name is Ryan Matthews, Administrator with Marion County Health and Human Services, and I am here to recommend David Beam as an honorary member of our Mental Health Advisory Committee, just for the benefit of the public. The Mental Health Advisory Committee serves in his advisory group for our Community Mental Health Program, which is operated by Marion County Health and Human Services, and I am the Community Mental Health Program Director. David, as seen by this morning, he being here for public comment, he is a regular contributor at board session. He has a passion for advocating for the needs of our community in a wide variety of areas, whether it's behavioral health, intellectual and developmental disabilities, as he serves as an honorary member of our IDD Advisory Committee, and then also the homeless population. He's here to champion many underserved populations and those that are often marginalized in our community or don't have a voice, and I think that the unique perspective and passion that he would bring to our committee would be well-served. So my hope is that we can make him an honorary member of that advisory committee, and we look forward to working closely with him to help benefit those in our community that are suffering from mental illness. And I don't know if David wanted to maybe add a few words in terms of your interest in the committee?
Yes, I do. I like to serve all of Marion County, and I do stuff on the mayor of Salem and Marion Ca- Marion Kaiser Mayor on homelessness. But the mayor of Portland's not looking at that issue statewide on disabilities, our homeless and not getting served, because a lot of them are gonna lose their housing, and I think the governor needs to look at that policy, make it rent go down low, because this really needs to be done. Thank you.
That's absolutely right.
Want to take a picture?
Yes. Yeah, I think we have a letter.
Yes.
Great, Brenda has it. So, David, are you okay if you take a picture with the Board of Commissioners out front here?
Yes.
Great.
I think you've proved that you're the right man for this position. Yeah, why don't we read the letter?
Okay.
All right, David, this is what it says. It says, "Dear David, with pleasure, we are writing to let you know of our decision to appoint you as an honorary member of the Marion County Mental Health Advisory Committee. We are grateful for your demonstrated commitment and know that you care deeply about improving services and supports for the citizens of Marion County. The Mental Health Advisory Committee supports the effective development of mental health services in Marion County, and you have shown yourself to be an excellent ambassador for this cause. David, we appreciate your years of service to the citizens of Marion County and your commitment to excellence. As an honorary member of the Mental Health Advisory Committee, you will provide an important perspective to the work we do. We look forward to all that we will accomplish together."
Thank you. I really appreciate that.
Come on in here. Ready? Okay.
Three, two, one, thank you. Sure, you do here.
Do you want one of them?
Oh, I was doing it with John's back, and I thought it was... There we go.
Thanks, David.
Okay, next up, we have Shaney Starr and Sherry Lindner, and we're gonna get an update on the Public Defenders of the Marion County Board of Trustees.
Yes, good morning. For the record, I'm Sherry Lindner, Marion County Volunteer Services Coordinator, and I'm really just here to introduce Shaney Starr. So, just as a little context, so, the Public Defenders of Marion County's Board of Trustees is a seven-member board. One of those positions is actually appointed by you, Marion County Board of Commissioners. Shaney Starr has served in that position for us since August of 2018, and she's here today just to give you a brief update and a snapshot of the work that they're doing.
I now need these. So, good morning, Chair Willis, Commissioner Cameron, and Commissioner Bethel. I am here to give a report and an update on the work that we've been doing. I, I'm not sure if this is a happy thing, or, but I was elected by the Board to serve as the Chair of the Board of Trustees for the Public Defenders Marion County, in our office, and took that, that was effective in January. So, just to jump in, one, I think one of the best things, best decisions that we have made as a board in recent, in about the last couple of years, it was the hiring of Shannon Wilson as our Executive Director. They have proven over and over again to, with the ability to navigate the challenging environment of public defense, Nishan might hand in Oregon and here locally, with grace and with insight and wisdom. And so I just, I want to applaud Shannon and their team, which is made up of about 18.5 FTE attorneys, one supervising attorney. We have a full-time trainer and an ops manager. We have eight staff and legal assistants. We have two case managers and an interpreter, which I'll talk about momentarily, as well as two discovery clerks and six law students working in the office as well, and one social work intern. And I lay that, that, kind of that context of our staffing, because it will help understand some of the achievements and the progress that has been made over the last couple of years. So first and foremost, it is our primary goal to ensure and uphold ethical practice standards in public defense within the office and through how that's managed, and they're really working hard to do that by analyzing the caseloads. And as you know, we have a significant shortage of public defenders, not just, again, across the country, but it's really, that's having an impact on us here locally and in Oregon. We are utilizing the ethical workload model and has really, I believe, we are seeing in terms of retention, changed the culture and the reputation of PDMC here within Oregon and within Marion County. We are embarking on a project to implement what is called a holistic defense model, and that really is working with the clients through our, and we're the first public defenders office in Oregon to get that funding and to implement, work to implement that model, and we've received fundings dedicated for the two case managers that we have. And those case managers, prior to implementing this model, we were asking our public defense attorneys to also serve as social workers, and they don't do that. That's not what they do, but that's what they were spending a significant amount of their time doing, is social work. So we, and really Shannon led this initiative to implement this holistic defense model, and was successful in obtaining dedicated funding from OPDS to hire two case managers to work side-by-side with our amazing attorneys to ensure that the clients are gaining access to services and actually getting them, and helping them to navigate some of those social service systems to address many of the issues that led them to become clients of PDMC in the first place. So we're excited to see how, kind of, some of the data on that as the project moves through. We have increased our public defense workload by seven additional full-time attorneys. We also, and when I say we, I really mean Shannon and the team, looked ahead at what could help with the retention of the attorneys that we're bringing on, and we identified, they identified training, and so Shannon made the decision to use some of our, some of the budgeted dollars to pay for an experienced attorney to train the brand-new attorneys that we were bringing on. So we, they weren't just being thrown to the proverbial wolves, so to speak, without any training. And that position's filled by Tom Sermack, who was the founding ED for PDMC. So we have the institutional knowledge of the work here in Oregon and Marion County helping to train up these brand-new public defense attorneys, and that's actually, that's actually paying dividends in our retention and data. For the first time in history of the PDMC office, we're able to pay our law students who are serving as law clerks. So I think you would appreciate that. We know it's expensive to go to law school, and you, we have to pay our students to be able to live and to work and to earn, earn their law degrees. They need to, we need to just support them through that process, and so we're excited to be able to do that. We also, I mentioned, receive funding, the dedicated funding for those two case managers who are also bilingual, and that's critical, because 35% of the PDMC clients are Spanish-speaking. So we're really trying to get down and address and take active, dedicated steps that will address the clients that we are serving. We are also active in collaborating with the stakeholders, both through OPDS as well as locally. So our attorneys and staff and leadership worked with the jail commander Larson and others at the jail to allow the attorneys to bring in Wi-Fi hotspots that allow the attorneys to more effectively review discovery and the information with the clients to ensure that they're getting quality defense services. So I'm really proud of the work that PDMC has done, and I consider it an honor and a privilege to be, serve at your pleasure, and I look forward to implementing even, working alongside Shannon and the leadership team to implement more sustainable funding initiatives to maintain that holistic defense model, and hopefully that can be replicated throughout Oregon.
Thank you, Shaney. Questions?
I don't have any questions. I have a few comments. I did not look ahead to today's agenda, so I did not know you were gonna be here, and I'm glad you are. I had the pleasure of meeting Shannon and speaking to her at a Public Safety Coordinating Council legislative breakfast that we had several weeks ago, and she is stellar. I do really love her personality. She's got kind of this go-get-'em attitude, and she's very positive. But I was concerned about some of the things she shared with me around the way the defense, the defense attorneys are handling their cases, and as you stated, they've been operating as social workers, which is, in my opinion, completely inappropriate for the job they signed up to do, because they're not trained to be social workers.
Correct.
So I'm relieved to hear that you have two FTE for that, but I know that you have a significant caseload over there, so how is only two FTE? I mean, some is better than none.
Right.
So I acknowledge that, and I'm thrilled that you guys are moving in that direction, but what's your steps to move forward to be able to wrap around? We've got lots of resources in Marion County, the Duminous Center, and a variety of other partners that I thought could just be kind of a part of the team. So can you describe a little of what that looks like, and maybe how we can do a better job of advocating for more social work-type system support?
So keep in mind, this is just getting started. So I think it's safe to see that we're learning a lot as we implement. So getting that funding for those two case managers was critical, and we do need more. There's a delicate balance between allocating the dollars that we are getting between competitive salaries and, you know, for our attorneys, so we are able to maintain the ethical workloads, and we're not losing attorneys. So we're balancing that with, as you identified, the need for more social workers to work alongside the clients. Also, there's the balance of two can't serve everybody.
Right.
And so I think it's, again, right, it's where I have been before in deciding which cases get assigned those services, or how, you know, we know we have a housing shortage, we know we have a shortage of mental health providers, or we have a shortage of, but, you know, treatment, substance use treatment, and so it's, it is a systemic, there are so many systemic issues, I liken it to peeling back the layers of the onion, and this is one place where we can start with that. It's not enough. I don't know that it will ever be enough, but we're, at least we're starting, and happy to say that we were the first in Oregon to work to implement that.
Yeah, you should be really proud of that. I, I am, so thank you for doing that and for cheering it. I do wonder, I kind of look at Ryan, we have a really robust peer program in our health department that, I, I don't know, right, a lot of the individuals that are on the clientele of the defense system, but I suspect that there's an opportunity for our health system. We have a housing navigator that we hired recently. There's some resources in our health department that might, there might be an opportunity for collaboration and conversation to see how we can be best serving our citizens. For me, ultimately, I don't want to see people be in jail and in prison, and I'd like to kind of stop that recidivism concept.
That's the goal.
And, right, and so ultimately, getting folks into some level of treatment and resource access and so forth really kind of reduces that, and we do have a stellar program. While it's, everything is overtaxed in the health department, I do think it is our obligation to look, to see what collaborations we can be seeking, so.
We'll be in touch, Ryan.
I would encourage the three of you, Ryan, Katrina, and Shaney, to have a chat, to kind of look at the systems and see if there's an opportunity there.
100%, thank you.
Thanks for being here.
Yeah, thank you.
Commissioner Cameron, do you have any questions?
Well, I just know that our public defenders has been a challenge, and it's great to have you there to support them, and I know we've had several meetings at our Public Safety Coordinating Council, presentations and updates, and we know that that impacts the whole public safety system when we don't. It backs up our jail, there's all kinds of consequences. So Shaney, great to have your leadership there, and we're really appreciative of what you do for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. It's definitely an honor.
Shaney, you mentioned the ethical workload model. What is that?
Okay, you're getting me into territory that is not my expertise. There is, and they're seeking, Shannon has tapped into what would be considered subject matter experts in ethical workloads. The challenge that we're faced with is, and just like, I'm gonna use language in a world that I understand, which is the CASA world. So we have standards of, that have been developed that help ensure that the, and when I, standards about how many cases a staff person can be responsible for supervising. And so when you surpass the number of standards that are comfortable, or we think are comfortable and adequate to ensure appropriate amount of time supervising those caseloads and understanding and be able, being able to help and guide or guide the volunteers, it's very similar to that kind of a workload for an attorney, and I, this is, I am gonna, I'm looking at your attorney to help on you, but you can't ask an attorney to have, and I'm just gonna use numbers, please don't hold me to these numbers, but 10, 10 murder cases and 50 misdemeanor cases or DUI cases, and expect that each of those clients is going to get a responsible and thorough attention to their case to ensure that they're receiving fair and just services. And so when we talk about that ethical workload model, it's really standards of the number of cases and the types of cases. So there's, I have learned so much, but I am not by any means well-versed in this, but you have misdemeanor, DUI, Measure 11, different levels of the felony crimes, and you have to be able to balance different types of those cases in order to ensure effective defense and quality defense. Otherwise, our attorneys are going to quit, and we're, we're just going to keep perpetuating the shortage of defense attorneys.
Great, thank you. Anything else, Commissioners?
No.
All right, thank you for your report, Shaney.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Sherry.
Okay, I will take...
All right. Motion on this agenda, yeah? I will move the consent calendar. Under Board of Commissioners, Board Appointment Justice Reinvestment Council, approve an order appointing Jim Hope to Marion County Justice Reinvestment Council with a term ending December 31st, 2024. Board Appointment, Compensation Board, approve orders appointing Lori Christopher, Jolene Kelly, and Melissa Valero to the Marion County Compensation Board with terms ending December 31st, 2023. Your OLCC application recommend approval of Jayce Teriyaki in Salem, Oregon. OLCC license recommended approval, approve an order recommending renewal of 94 Oregon Liquor Control Commission licenses referenced in Exhibit A.
I second. Sorry.
It's a big one.
I know, well...
We were not here for a week.
That's right.
OLCC licenses recommended denial, and I'm gonna say this twice, maybe five times, because this is a bad one. Approve an order recommending denial of one Oregon Liquor Control Commission license reference in Exhibit A, causes a lot of problems. Under Public Works, schedule a final consideration to adopt an administrative ordinance for March 1st, 2023, amending the Marion County Comprehensive Plan by adopting 7.2 acre amendment to the City of Sublimity Urban Growth Boundary UGB Public Right-of-Way. Under the Tax Office, approve an order for a property tax refund in the amount of $31,468.34 for May trucking company tax account 591685. Under the Tax Office, approve an order designating The Woodburn Independent as the newspaper for publications of the 2023 tax foreclosure list. And finally, under the Treasurers' Office, approve an order distributing Oregon State Forestry timber revenue in the amount of $89,704.39 as per ORS Chapter 530.
I second the motion.
The motion is second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none of those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, motion passes. Okay, thank you. Jeff White is up next. We're gonna consider approval of the contract for services with government portfolio advisors, the amount of $450,000 to provide investment advisory services through February 28th, 2028. Good morning, Jeff.
Good morning, Chair, Commissioners. Thank you for letting me be here today. We, if you'll recall, a little over a year ago, we entered into a contract with GPA, or Government Portfolio Advisors, to take over the handling of our investments. We've been very happy with their services. It was a one-year contract, it's kind of a trial run. Treasurer Brentano asked me to tell you that he's very happy with them. He couldn't be here this morning, apologized, but he feels like they've been flexible and responsive to our needs. We would like to, the contract before you is to enter into a five-year contract with them, with an option to renew for an additional five years. For some very apples-and-oranges comparison, it's hard to do this, but in the previous couple of years, our investment returns were around $450,000. Last January, year-to-date, we were $260,000, a little over halfway. This year, we're at $873,000 in investment returns through January. Now, rates are different than in previous years, they're up quite a bit. We have more money because of all the federal money that we've had put into our accounts, but they're doing a good job for us, we're pretty happy with them. Their rates are, they charge us 3/10 of our investment portfolio. If that number were to go, if our investment portfolio were to go up over $400 million, that rate would drop, but I don't think it will. I think we'll be in that 3/10 of 1% range for quite a while. Our initial contract was for $80,000. We're gonna go just above that this year, so we made the contract in the future to be approximately $90,000 per year. We think that's about the range of what we'll pay them in investment fees. But again, it's largely based on what our, what our portfolio balance is, so it could be a little more, a little less each year, depending on that. I anticipate our dollars in our investment portfolio are gonna drop as we spend money, as we've been spending money on the American Rescue Plan. So I think that contract amount is in the right ballpark. We'd like to continue doing business with them, if that's okay with you guys, or if you have any questions, let me know.
Any questions?
Well, Jeff. When you first said it, Jeff, I thought I heard how we gamble with our investments, and it was how we handle.
Oh. We do not gamble. We do not gamble.
I had to think twice about what you said. That's why I looked up and said, no, you did say handle.
I hope so.
He doesn't strike me as much of a gambler, and I'm sure Commissioner Britanno, or, excuse me, Treasurer Britanno is not either.
I think Marion County did that once before, and everybody's paying the price. Paid the price.
Way before our time. Way so quickly.
Not while I've been here.
So, this is part of the restructuring of the Treasurer's Office and our Finance Department, and, I mean, it seems like it's been a really good thing for the citizens of Marion County. The amount of money we're paying to staff the Treasurer's Office has gone down significantly. We're bringing in these outside investment advisors to do the same work in your shop, and it seems like they're doing good work, so this seems like a win-win-win for everybody involved. Thank you, Jeff.
Ready for a motion?
I am.
Great. I move to approve the contract for services with the government portfolio advisors in the amount of $450,000 to provide investment advisory services through February 28th, 2028.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion to second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none of those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, the motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. All right, Katrina, looks like you're up next, and Matt, and we're gonna consider approval of an ordinance to amend and certify the Marion County Ambulance Service Area Plan for a five-year term. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Katrina Griffith, and I'm the Deputy Director for Marion County Health and Human Services, and here with me today is Matt.
Good morning. Do I need to push this? The talker's already up. My name is Matt Newvenheim. Started with the, with, working with Katrina about four months ago, so I'm learning on the fly here. She's got quite a process going before I came aboard, so it's been a pleasure to kind of learn what's going on here, and she's done some good work, so we're excited to be here with the plan now.
Today's your first official board presentation?
Yes.
Like you're here? Well, welcome.
Thank you.
Yes, so thank you. We're here seeking approval of the ambulance service area plan, which includes response time zone maps and ASA boundary adjustments. time zone maps and ASA boundary adjustments. The ordinance will also need an update because it references Attachment B, and Attachment B is our ASA plan, and so that process will come back again here.
I'm sorry, Katrina, did you happen to say what ASA is for the public who knows no idea about acronyms?
That would be a good idea.
Yeah.
The ambulance service area is, ASA is short for ambulance service area. It is due to be updated every five years, and it describes how the county and the ASA Committee work together to ensure coordinated, timely, and safe service delivery of pre-hospital emergency services. So the plan details ten ASA boundaries, locations of all the public safety answering points, location of fire districts, and response time zones. So again, we update the ASA plan every five years, so this plan before you today is, would be good through December 31st, 2027. However, if at some point we do see a need to make an update to the plan, that is something that we could do. We also looked at 2020 census data and our response time zones and found a couple of boundary changes that we'll talk about as we go through the presentation. Oregon Health Authority issued a letter with updates and recommendations for our next plan. Two of the findings were related to updating the maps and making them more clear. There were several areas noted in our county ordinance, but not well-defined in the plan, related to problem resolution and quality improvement programs, so the language from the ordinance was inserted to the ASA plan. One finding stated that we needed to name the agencies and key personnel for specialized services, including hazmat, search and rescue, and specialized rescue and extrication. Since this is a five-year plan, this finding didn't really make sense for us to list agencies and key personnel, and we know that our emergency management program in the Public Works Department does keep an updated list of all of these emergency services on file, so we'll make sure to reference that in our ASA plan and on our website when it gets posted. We also updated definitions to align with Oregon Administrative Rules and streamlined some language that was noted differently between several, between our documents, so in some places, it was mentioned that agencies need to have a medical director, in other places, listed physicians, so we just wanted to make everything, all the language consistent. Same with quality assurance and quality improvement, they were used interchangeably, so we, we made those adjustments to the plan to be more clear. And then we just updated formatting and font, and we'll make it more user-friendly, reader-friendly when it's published on, online. So the majority of the updates that were made were to the response time zone maps. Between 2012 and 2020, Marion County saw an increase in population size by about 8.2%. And the bulk of that population grew in Salem-Kaiser area, with some other notable increases in North Marion County and east of Salem. So these response time zones are based on population density, which is why I bring up the 2020 census and the population growth. An urban response time category is eight minutes, which is an incorporated community of 50,000 or more. So, City of Salem was already listed as urban, so that population growth in the City of Salem didn't really impact the response time zones because it was already at the lowest one of urban for eight minutes. The suburban area is not an urban area and which is contiguous to an urban community. It includes the area within a 10-mile radius of that community center. It also includes areas beyond the 10-mile radius which are contiguous to the urban community and have a population density of 1,000 or more per square mile, and that response time is 15 minutes. And these definitions are in the Oregon Administrative Rules, in the trauma system rules. We, Marion County chose to add an additional response time designation, which is noted as Rural 1. These designations are areas within an ASA that are not urban, not suburban, and that are either an incorporated city of greater than 2,000 and less than 9,000 in population, or are within a 30-mile radius of such a city center. So that is a definition that Marion County decided a while ago. A rural area, so this would be Rural 2, it's a geographic area of 10 or more miles from a population center of 50,000 or more, with a population density of greater than six persons per square mile, so that is 45 minutes. And then moving on to frontier, six or fewer persons per square mile and are accessible by paved roads, and this response time is 120 minutes. And then we know that in our frontier areas, there are also search and rescue areas, which are not easily accessible by paved roads, and there's no established pre-hospital response time for search and rescue areas because of the complicated nature of those types of This is a map of the population density in Marion County, so you can see the purple, the darker purple areas are where we have greater population density. Now I'm gonna turn it over to Matt to talk about the maps.
All right. First, I want to thank Adam Cruto at GIS that really helped us get these maps together, and I've been working pretty closely with him, making a lot of adjustments and things, and he's helped a lot. I'm just gonna cover a few of the major changes. The Woodburn ASA had a pretty significant couple of changes. The areas you see there between, up in the north area, between I-5 and 99E from Rural 1 to Suburban. And then towards the bottom of that area, there was Rural 2 to Suburban, right along the I-5 and 99E area. And then there's also a large area running north and south along the eastern boundary of Marion County, and that changed from Rural 2 to Rural 1. And then there are two small areas west of I-5, approximately along the Wakanda Road and Wheatland Road area, changed from Suburban to Rural 2. You can see the little purple areas there, just over to the left. Then the Saniam ASA, they also had a small area along Highway 22, changed from Rural 1 to Suburban, the little orange towards the southern area there. And we also worked pretty extensively with the ASAs, all the different areas, and we got support on all of these changes from them, so. If you want to go to the next slide there, the, we had two, Katrina talked about the, the response time changes. We had two, two major changes. The Rural 2 changed from 43 minutes to 45 minutes, and the Frontier changed from 268 minutes to 120 minutes, response time requirements.
And that aligns with what the Oregon Administrative Rule says.
And then we had some minor updates. We, the MLK Junior Parkway, that was renamed, we, we adjusted that in the plan. The adjustments to a few areas between Turner and Salem, I'll just cover those quickly. So the first one was from Turner, which is ASA 8, to Salem, which is ASA number 1, south of Boone Road, southeast between I-5 and 36th Avenue. And again, Commissioner, I think we, during the work session, you looked at these maps and just kind of covering that quickly. And then the second area was also between Salem and Turner, so they kind of had a little bit of a swap to align with some of the boundary, fire boundary district lines. So there's a group of properties there, southwest of Markham Street, southeast, and the train tracks. Then the last one was from, between Jefferson and Turner, so it was from Jefferson 9 to Turner, ASA number 8. There's a small area south of Summit Loop Road, southeast, and the fire district boundary is much more aligned there, so that's another example of that, that situation. And then finally, the plan requires the 911 dispatch. So here on the map, you see CCOM at the top, in the green, the darker green, MACCOM in the blue, and then our, in Salem, the West Valley dispatch area. And then finally, another requirement is the fire district boundary map, and that's our, our last slide there, and that, that includes all of our fire districts within, you know, that, that exist within the ASAs. Thank you.
And finally, so this was one major milestone to complete the ambulance service area plan. We received the letter from OHA back when I was still heavily involved in the COVID response, and so it's nice to get to this point. We do have some further updates that we'll be coming forward with throughout the rest of the year. We're looking at updating language in our franchise agreements. We will also be updating our application process and purchasing a software system so we can have closer access to the response time data in addition to the provider self-reports, and updating our ambulance service area committee bylaws, and implementing a system review committee, which is also our quality assurance committee, and that would meet quarterly or as issues arise that would be addressed in a subcommittee of our ambulance service area committee. So that's all we have prepared for you today. Do you have any questions or comments?
That was very comprehensive. Any questions?
I do have a couple of questions, so I think we have, I think the Commissioners have a pretty good pulse on the ASA and/or the intentions behind it. Over the weekend, there was some social media chatter around some concerns of community growth, population influx, with housing developments going on in different smaller communities across Marion County. A bulk of that discussion was around concern for a lack of resources and infrastructure. So my question ultimately is, let's say that we have a community up the canyon that decides to increase significantly over the next couple of years, would that prompt a review of this particular plan to look at the available resources and times available? Because I, I think that there's a, a trigger effect, right? And it, it's not that we're gonna do it in five years, it's that we're paying attention to the resource need across Marion County, i.e., you all are. And is that driven by population increase, or is it something else that triggers that review?
Most likely would be call volume.
Okay.
And response time data, population increase, we'd have to look at more than just one factor. I think in the area, it also depends on the geography, too. So your response times are gonna be longer for those areas of the county that are just more difficult to travel.
Right.
So, and then in the application process itself to become a franchise, there is a description of what services you have available and how they're staffed and time and day. And so if we identify a need, then we can have that conversation directly with the ambulance provider in that community.
Okay, perfect. Well, I imagine over the next two years, we'll be doing a fair amount of looking into resources and needs that, as they arise, specifically in the Saniam Canyon because of the recovery of the fire and a significant amount of investment that's being poured in up there. So, thanks for your work on this. I know it's been a long time coming, and I know that there's a lot of opinions and participation from organizations across the county that provide services, and they're all super-type A, A, A-plus personalities, so I just want to thank you. I understand the difficulty that this process, I think, brings to their emotional standards, and I think that you've handled it very well, and look forward to continuing with your new team to, to manage it really on your behalf, so thanks for the work.
Thank you, and I'm really impressed with Matt, all of his work up this far. He's brand-new and really dived right in, so.
Well, it turns out Marion County, it seems to only hire quality people, so we're thrilled that you're another one.
I love A, A, A personalities.
Yeah, you, you fit in that space really well, good. Maybe not Sean so much, but he's a little more laid-back than some.
Yeah, actually, that's a really good example. So you, we did talk a little bit about the growth in North Marion County and that, those extreme changes in the response time zones, and they've added, they've been doing this ongoing, is working with their local communities and placing ambulances in areas that they've seen additional call volume, or their response times aren't as quick as they'd like to be. So they've added Medic 26, and I think on our ride-alongs that Matt and I have both done, we're like, oh, there's Medic 26, you know? There's that additional medic that's serving that North County region, so I, I want to thank all the ASA, all the providers as well, because they, they do an incredible job, and their participation is very helpful.
Good.
Commissioner Cameron, do you have any comments or thoughts?
Oh, no, not on this. Other than, let's see, it's 45 minutes to Detroit, so I gotta get a defibrillator in my house. All right.
So, so if you're ready.
I will. I'm going to ask that we, that the Chair reads the title by once, and that we approve an ordinance to amend the certif, and certify the Marion County Ambulance Service for a five-year term ending December 31st, 2027, and that we bring it back in three weeks.
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
Thirteen days.
I must have something in my ear, because I heard gambling instead of handling, and I thought you said three weeks. Two weeks.
I may have.
Mr. Chair, I'll make that in two weeks, is that okay?
Okay, are you comfortable with that motion?
Is it a motion?
Yes.
Okay, then I second that.
We have a motion to second. Is there any further discussion? The only thing I would say is, we mentioned Sean's here. Sean, I just want to thank you for all your volunteer work. I know that you do real work with your ambulance company, but you volunteer a lot, and you help, just help the ASA, and you've been doing it for a really long time, and I know you also volunteer nationally and, and represent the needs and concerns of ambulance providers, so thank you for all your volunteer work. Any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, the motion passes. I will now read this by title. In the matter of amending the ambulance servants' area ordinance and plan certifying the ambulance service area plan. And you guys will bring it back to us in two weeks?
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have Carl Lund, Janelle Shanahan. No, we do not have Carl Lund. We have Lonnie.
Sorry to disappoint.
Not a disappointment. You're always welcome here. And, Janelle, and we're gonna consider approval of the incoming funds grant agreement with the Oregon Department of Transportation Safety Office in the amount of $186,160.63 for creation of a transportation safety action plan.
Good morning. For the record, Lonnie Radke, Public Works.
Janelle Shanahan, Public Works.
And good morning, Commissioners, Jan, Jane, and Brenda. We are here today to ask you to consider approval, approval of a grant that we could be receiving from ODOT's Safety Office for the development of a transportation safety action plan. This is a plan we've talked about in the past that will help us analyze our safety data and identify and prioritize safety needs through that data, also getting us ready to apply for grant applications, including, one of the main goals would be being eligible for the IIJA Safe Streets for All Grants, the federal grants. This will help us also develop proactive approaches, and this would eventually be incorporated into our transportation system plan update that you'll be hearing more about, which is our bigger TSP effort.
that you'll be hearing more about, which is our bigger TSP effort. There, I will add one thing, that this shows that it will go through September 30th, 2023, but we are already aware that it will take a little bit longer. And ODOT is aware, and we will be filing for an amendment soon.
I actually wrote down the dates.
That's a pretty, I know, usually we're talking about why they're so far out, and this one is coming up so fast. It will be likely another year. It'll be extended.
Okay.
Any questions?
I do have questions. So I was waiting for Janelle to jump in or something. So she's probably here to answer the questions.
She's here for questions, yeah.
So I was reading through the packet. Not entirely sure. You're going to pay a consultant $90,000, it looks like. It does, you know, it's like $90,000 for the consultant, $45,000 for outreach, is what it said on the paperwork that I was just looking at. What's the consultant going to be doing? You know, can you, I understand the concept of outreach.
Okay. The consultant will be doing all the data analysis.
Okay.
And identifying all our crash histories, and identifying where the most need is, along with the outreach, where we will be hearing from the residents.
Okay. So what guidelines do this, does the consultant kind of operate in? I, you know, I spent the last two years on SCAS, and there's some push and pull as to certain definitions of what safety is and how safety should be applied. And I'm just curious and also possibly concerned about the lens that a consultant would bring into the review of the data, because they're ultimately going to be producing a report with suggestions to your team on where to deploy those safety mechanisms in the future, right?
Yes.
So I'd like to think that all consultants are just super-neutral, but I think that they're kind of guided usually by some structure. Is that right?
Very much by data, I think.
Right, right. And the severity of the injury, or whether it's a fatality. The fatalities and the severe injuries are the ones that, like, rise to the top.
Okay.
There's a bigger cost to those higher severity crashes.
Yeah.
So we're looking for the benefit to cost. I mean, simply put, that sounds insensitive, but when you're looking at numbers and data, that's how we're, that's what we're looking at.
Okay, perfect. So eventually, there'll be a report that's produced, and then somehow we're participating in, like, an understanding of that and what the next steps will be?
Yes, yes. We'd love to hear.
I'm actually really interested in this.
Yes, yes. We'd love to hear more about how the board would like to be involved, because we will have a steering committee or some, some kind of a committee, and we'd love for your involvement in that. Yes.
So you'll be, is it like a public-based steering committee? Is that a part of the outreach?
Yeah, we're going to provide an online kind of map and allow for input from everyone in the county can come and drop a pen and make a comment, like, hey, this is a concern, this is why. And then we are planning to travel, and this will be, the county is going to be doing this, not the consultant, to different regions. So like, we're going to identify the northern region and southern region, and even out in the canyon are kind of the areas we're identifying, because there's different, you know, different concerns in different areas, and provide open houses and have meetings.
Okay, that's great. It's fine with you all. I'd really like for Lonnie and Janelle to work with John on your communication efforts. I know Public Works in the NC does a good job. I'd like to elevate it all the way up to make sure that we're pushing county-wide.
Yes.
For request for participation and input.
Great, yes. Appreciate that.
Would be, you know, we hear from citizens all the time. Actually, Carl, and I think Janelle, last time I saw you drove out to a space where I was like, how did this road end up like this?
Yep.
And while you can't always just get in the car and go there, I think that there's input that citizens would really like to receive, and I want to give them the opportunity to do that. Great, thank you.
I think, I think a schedule two where we, the board interacts with the steering committee or with you regularly, I think, would be good as well, so that we're involved along the way.
And we would be happy for one or any of you to be on, in that, involved, like, be involved on that committee or group.
Yeah. It might just be something where we just schedule an extra work session.
Okay.
Rather than it be like, we do this, and then you show up at the end. It's, there's some periodic checking.
Absolutely. We'd be happy to do that.
This is great.
Mm-hmm, it is.
Okay. Commissioner Cameron, anything else? All right, I'll take a motion.
All right. I move to approve the incoming funds grant agreement with the Oregon Department of Transportation Safety Office in the amount of $186,161.63 for the creation of a transportation safety action plan through September 30th, 2023.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Ryan, you're up next. We're going to consider approval of amendment number two to the incoming, incoming funds intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Department of Transportation to add $155,700 for a new contract total of $1,279,700 for supplemental project number 34018, Connecticut Avenue, McClay Road to Ricky Street.
All right. Good morning. For the record, Ryan Cruther, Marion County Public Projects Manager. And as you said today, I'm here to talk to you about our Connecticut Avenue project. The project's located in northeast Salem. It's just west of Lancaster and north of Highway 22. So as you can see, the existing conditions, there's sidewalk and bike lanes on one side of the road. There's no facilities on the east side of the road, or west side of the road. Sorry, my, my directions are backwards. So the project's scope includes constructing those missing sections of sidewalk along the west side of Connecticut. We're also going to construct bike lanes. We're going to replace any non-compliant sidewalk or ADA ramps on either side of the roadway. We're going to upgrade the concrete refuge island, which if you've driven this road, you've seen it. It's large and fairly dilapidated at this point. We're going to put ADA ramps through it so that pedestrians can get through that intersection. We're going to also construct any stormwater treat, or treatment and conveyance facilities that are required, like we do with any urban improvement project. And the real goal of this project is that Hock Middle School is just south of the project area, and we see a lot of pedestrian movement. We see a lot of students move through this area, and we want to provide facilities for them to get to their basically destinations, including that school. So amendment two actually doesn't change the project scope. You've seen this presentation before. Nothing about the project's changing. What is changing is that we're going to add additional federal funding and county match to fully cover right-of-way acquisition. Our right-of-way phase was not, didn't have enough money, so we're adding money to purchase the right-of-way that's needed and do the appraisals to value that land. So the previous project estimate was $1,124,000. Amendment two increases this by $155,700. Of that, $139,709 is federal, and then we pay our standard county match. The new total project estimate's $1,279,700. And with that, I'd ask if you have any questions or comments.
Can I have any questions?
Questions, questions?
No. Well, I'm just going to break down the motion into the federal and the county share, because right now it's just a total. That's okay. Because we usually do that.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Mr. Chair, I'll move that we approve amendment number two for incoming funds intergovernmental agreement, intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Transportation Department for $139,709.61 and a county share of $15,990.39 for a new contract total of $1,279,700.
I second the motion.
For the project 310, we're just really ready to go to do business.
34.
Well, there's no date on mine, so I was just moving along.
Connecticut Avenue, McClay Road to Ricky Street.
All right. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes.
Good.
Thank you, Ryan.
Word is moving today.
All right. Next up, we have Brian and Camber, and we're consider, we're, sorry. I'm going to open the contractor review board, and we're going to consider approval of an order to set a public hearing date for March 15th, 2023, to consider granting an exemption to allow an alternative competitive process pursuant to the Marion County Public Contracting Rules.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Camber Schlag. I'm the Contracts and Procurement Manager in the Finance Department.
And I'm Brian Nicholas, Marion County Public Works Director. We are before you today to request a public hearing to be held on March 15th, 2023, to receive testimony on a proposed alternative competitive process to solicit construction management general contractor services for the North Sandy Am Canyon sewer project. Marion County received $50 million from the state legislature in the form of American Rescue Plan Act dollars, and that is administered through the Oregon Business Development Department to partially fund the design and construction of the North Sandy Am Sewer Project. The project consists of three primary parts. First, the design and construction of a new sewer plant and collection system for Mill City Gates, the design and hopefully ultimate construction of a sewer system for the Detroit Idana area, and the design and construction of interim commercial septic systems serving the commercial core of Detroit. Public Works awarded Keller and Associates the contract for architectural and engineering services, and the initial phase of design development is underway. The engineer's opinion of probable cost for the project is approximately $106 million. The cost opinion was prepared in 2021, and construction costs have generally increased since the cost opinion was prepared. The currently awarded funding is believed to be enough to construct the Mill City Gates sewer system and Detroit interim commercial septic infrastructure. If sufficient additional funding is received, then the project will also construct the Detroit Idana sewer system. The project has two significant challenges. First, ARPA funding has various aggressive funding obligation and expenditure deadlines. Funds must be under contract no later than December 31st, 2024, and fully expended by December 31st, 2026. That timeline is extraordinarily aggressive for a project this size and complexity. The second challenge is just the, the nature of the construction industry in western Oregon right now. There is so much, or there has been so much work on the street that it is difficult to get construction contractors interested in doing remote work in locations like Detroit Idana when they have all the work that they can handle right here in their home, you know, home, home base. So those two challenges, we're hoping to, to address by the method we use to construct for contracting services.
Okay. The department has identified the competitive CMGC solicitation method as the preferred contract delivery option because of the complex nature of the project work, which requires a greater emphasis on the general contractor's experience and technical ability, as well as a very strict expenditure deadline associated with the project funding. In order to utilize the CMGC solicitation for public improvements, Oregon revised statute 279(c)(335) requires the local contract review board to make certain findings as part as, part of authorizing the use of the alternative contracting method. In reviewing this exemption from competitive bidding, the local contract review board shall consider the following factors: that it is unlikely the exemption will encourage favoritism in awarding of public improvement contracts or substantially diminish competition. The CMGC process will allow, this will be publicly advertised to ensure fair and open and competitive process. The process allows the county to select the firm based on experience, ability to respond to the technical complexity, the unique character of the project, past performance, price, value, and other factors. The selection process to determine the highest ranking proposal will be based on a team review of weighted evaluation criteria identified in the solicitation. The CMG solicitation will include requirements pursuant to federal, state, and local public contracting code to ensure fair and open competition for any subcontractors or subconsultants. The awarding of the public improvement contract under the exemption will likely result in substantial cost savings and other substantial benefits to the county, because price will be a significant factor in scoring of the proposals. And selecting a firm that is capable of complying with project timelines and manage a highly technical and complex project will provide additional resources, savings to the county. So with that, we are requesting, we have an order in front of you, requesting that we hold a public hearing on March 15th to allow for testimony to be presented at the public hearing for this CMGC process.
Any questions?
Yeah. Please, Mr. Chair. So public hearing is to make sure people have an opportunity to question those findings that we would be making.
Correct.
Correct, okay. Then I'll reserve my questions for making sure that during the public hearing.
I don't have any questions. Nope, I'm ready for the March 15th date to hurry up and be here. This project needs to get going. Time is of the essence, as Ryan stated.
So this motion would just be to set the public hearing date?
Yes.
Yep. You ready for that?
I am.
All right. I move to close the contract review board and approve an order to set a public hearing date for March 15th, 2023, to consider granting an exemption to allow an alternative competitive process pursuant to the Marion County Public Contracting Rules.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thanks for your work on this.
Public hearing is set, and we are adjourning as a contract review board. We are reconvening as a Board of Commissioners. And is there anything else for the good of the order before we adjourn, Commissioners?
We were in DC last week. We went out for a week, and it's my first time going as a commissioner, being able to sit, you know, in the space with our congressional delegates. And also, I think the highlight for me was interacting with commissioners all across the country. And I'm not a, how do you create something new, but how do you borrow something and apply it and make it, make it ours? And it was fascinating, and I felt like, when I came home, of course, exhausted, because it's just like, every day, every hour is something. And there's just, I mean, there's like 3,000 commissioners from across the United States in this hotel space. I felt it was very productive for me, and there was so much learning to be done and to kind of analyze through the last few days and follow up on connections and conversations, and then really process the conversations that we had with specifically Senator Wyden while we met, well, Commissioner Cameron met with the staff of Senator Merkley. I really found that experience with Senator Wyden to be different than I, what I went in thinking it would be. I appreciated his interactiveness, his real concern for the projects that we presented to him, and then the team. And he brought seven of his staff to our space, and they're very aggressive in their interest to working collaboratively. And I think there's this, for me, concept that like, they're over there, and I'm over here, and how do we, like, meet in the middle to be working together? And I'm optimistic and a bit, you know, more positive on the outcome than I was going in around what that looks like for solutions that we need brought forward from him and Congress to really invest, like, this concept of ARPA challenges and being able to get this sewer project done. You know, it's an act of Congress, literally, to be able to extend the ARPA investment, you know, for another year or two, and being able to lobby and have those discussions and share finite, like, spaces as to why is just so important to our citizens. And I just had never done it before. So thanks for supporting all of us going back there. I thought it was really impactful. And, you know, can't wait to kind of share through forums this year with citizens, like, what that looked like, and, and how we're really trying to escalate Marion County through the federal lens.
I think the, the one that I'm interested in is whether we can use that Medicaid money for mobile crisis response teams.
Yeah.
Because we had gotten direction from the state that we couldn't use it for the teams that we have that are co-located with police officers, even though we've had eight years of very effective response there. That's been a very good model. And he was very adamant that, no, no, his intention was for this money to be able to support those teams. And so I think it's interesting, because sometimes, you know, the local staff here, they're not as much in the policy weeds, whereas the staff in DC are really in the policy weeds. And so I think that's where it's valuable to go back there and talk to the folks that are actually working on the legislation in real time and have them try to troubleshoot, you know, with you. And we'll see, we'll see if they can actually get that done or not. But it's definitely something we had to advocate for, and I hope that, I hope that we can get that done.
I kind of liken it to how we locally, when we're out and about, last night we had a big event. And I think that you kind of have to be a certain way when we're doing the work versus how we're outperforming to interact and network with our community, listening and trying to collect and bring back. When they're here, when those congresspeople are here, they're really kind of performing and trying to create the relationships and the access and the interest. But when you go back there, you're literally sitting at the table, kind of doing the work with those folks that are in the policy weeds. And I had never experienced that before, so I just see it so differently. And, yeah, I just, I'm... see it so differently, and, yeah, I just, I'm, it was just such a unique educational experience to just be present with folks who are making decisions, and he's been there my entire life as Senator, which I have, you know, feelings about, but he has such institutional knowledge and relationships, and he is, he holds a pretty powerful space, and to be able to talk about this mobile crisis bill that's literally his bill and why it's important, and championing it through the state of Oregon, because he sees the behavioral health needs that we have that does interact with law enforcement, um, but other things like broadband, uh, the wildfire recovery, um, he just had different knowledge that I thought that he wouldn't have, um, because he's just so over there, which is really kind of far away from what we're doing, but his staff have a good pulse on it, and they're very eager and interested to be working with us and, and, you know, in that, our staff, on being successful in the things that we set as priorities for our citizens. But, yeah, I look forward to kind of following through the year with the interaction of his team, specifically on outcomes.
Yeah, and he, he has, um, taken an interest, I mean, he's been in the canyon since the fires, I don't know, two or three times.
Yeah.
Um, so he, he does, when he comes here, he's, he, he looks, he sees it, you know, and of course he represents the whole state, and that's a little
It's huge.
Tough, and when, when you go back there and you feel like he's paying attention to you in Marion County, that's a pretty, pretty nice, uh, feeling, and, and I think our job, I mean, as, as a Commissioner, I've always said this, you represent three hundred and fifty thousand people, not just the ones that voted for you.
Yeah.
And our job is to, um, you know, uh, I don't know how many federal tax dollars go from Marion County to Washington DC, but we have an opportunity to bring those back here.
Right.
And I believe that that relationship that you just described makes a difference, and then having the connections that we have with the people back there that work for us makes a big difference, and, um, you know, they, and they appreciate that we go back there, but there's no doubt if, if you were a Senator or a Congresswoman, if you and people that come to see you and say, hey, this is important to me, you're going, hey, that's good, so both ways, when they're here and when we go back, it does make a difference, and, you know, we just keep trying, um, I'm looking out there at the bridge grant, you know, the seven bridges that, I don't know if we're gonna get it or not, but
We talked about it, he's interested in it.
Yeah, and, and, uh, you know, Commissioner Willis and I, what, how many times did we go to Department of Transportation?
Transportation.
I know we, we went at least twice.
At least, well, no, that's right, we've only gone twice.
Yeah, yeah, and
This, you went the third time.
Every, well, this is my fourth or fifth time, I don't know, every time I go back, I go to the Department of Transportation, because we always need, you know, those kinds of funds, we can't do everything we do unless we get those funds back here. So I think that's, that, I'm, I think it was a really productive trip, I know you guys, you, you both got to see the President of the United States, which is an opportunity of a lifetime.
Yeah.
Whether you agree, disagree politically, uh, and I know the two years previous, well, last year I got to, um, see President Biden, and two years just before COVID, I got to, you know, President Trump came and spoke to us, and that's just a really, a lot of people don't get to, you know, to experience that, and it is the, the President of the United States of America, and, uh, it's a pretty good honor. I think the highlight of my trip, other than the work we did, was the tour of the Pentagon.
Oh, yeah.
Commissioner, thank you for setting that up.
That was pretty cool.
Of all my trips, I mean, I've been going back to Washington DC since, I don't know, restaurant days of, you know, nineteen ninety-five or four, whatever, and, um, it, that, that was just really, I mean, it's like a museum.
Yeah.
You know, uh, all the artifacts and everything that was in there, and, and it was a long day for us, but, um, and I was ready for dinner afterwards.
Well, and the, and the, the quilts, remember they had the Hall of Quilts commemorating September, from State and, the first, the, the first quilt
Yeah.
in the hall, there's a, they, they asked people
It's the nine eleven memorial.
From, after nine eleven happened, they asked all over the country for people to send in quilts as sort of like a memorial of the, for the victims who, who died in the Pentagon, nine eleven, and the first quilts, you know, they picked, uh, twenty quilts or something.
Yeah.
The first one is from State and Oregon, and that, that was pretty special.
From a young, a young girl, she was in like, middle school.
Yeah, and then, and then, you know, after dinner, doing, doing the little taxi tour of a few monuments at night.
Yeah.
It's just really special, it's a, it's a special place to go and visit, um, and it, you know, you have to do those things as well as do the work while you're back there, because it's a, I mean, it, it's an inspirational place for me to go.
Yeah.
But then I love leaving.
Absolutely.
Yeah, you come home into Oregon, you get off the plane, and you just take in the Oregon air, I did that a few times.
As Reagan said, a city surrounded by reality, right?
I think it is also the case that it's the only time that we get to talk with the Senators and the Representatives Legislative Assistance, the ones that are actually working on those bills, for whatever reason, they just, they don't really come back to Oregon, so, it is
How could they?
It is important for us to
I mean, we were, we were there for like, five days, and we could, there was not a second, like, they're moving, I mean, it was crazy.
Yeah.
There, every week, there's some group trying to get their attention, I mean, I was there, I met with them all twice, because I was there as the AOC leadership team, and we'd gone Monday, and we spent half our day, so these folks spent half the day with Commissioners from across Oregon, myself included, and then Tuesday, we went just in our one-on-one appointments, they did that for, you know, there was twenty-nine counties represented from Oregon alone
Yeah.
that they were meeting with, and then there's the other forty-nine states of the US that they're trying to meet, I can't imagine how they would ever fly out here, the policy staff to talk to us.
But it's so important for us to give them the input, because they're the ones actually writing the legislation, you know, so.
It was great, anyway.
Very good.
When we were sitting here, I got notice, I was gonna tour the, or I was gonna do the, uh, Oregon State Parks
Yeah.
Commission, they're gonna, um, cancel the in-person stuff because of the weather. I know Public Works is just walking out the door, do we have an update on, um, are we gonna be seeing snow and ice, do we know?
Maybe about an inch on the valley floor, uh, it'll be in the hills.
It's, it was snowing at my house when I drove down today, I was just showing Brenda and Jane a video, I thought I'm gonna have to drive Jan home, because she isn't driving in the snow.
So, no prediction of ice though, Brian, right? We're still on, we're still on camera, so, yeah.
If you don't mind me jumping in.
Yeah.
Uh, Brian Nicholas, Marion County Public Works Director. Uh, yes, two o'clock yesterday afternoon, National Weather Service, uh, sent out its update, um, and it looks like in Salem, there is a chance we'll get about an inch of snow on the valley floor, but it's not expected to stick around long, um, however, up in the south, Salem Hills, in the foothills for sure, uh, Detroit between what they got last night plus what's expected tonight, Detroit might have close to twenty inches total.
Yeah, there's, there's about eight inches on my camera this morning when I looked, I didn't go up there, but
Huge fan.
But those, but isn't the, isn't the temperature supposed to drop too?
My girls are too.
So, whatever we get may stick around a little bit?
Well, below five hundred feet, uh, not really.
Okay.
It'll, it'll be too wet and warm, but above five hundred feet, yeah, folks will have snow all day, and, uh, and they'll probably melt off tomorrow, or, or, they'll be Friday, melt off on Friday.
All right.
Thanks, Brad.
Yeah.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Anything else?
No, sir.
Okay, we're adjourned.
That sounds like an amazing trip you guys had.